However many towns in the world. Can't get him stuck up. That's why I asked if anyone would band, they wouldn't be willing to do that. The bands, the brass bands.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report. With recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting of August 11th, 2025. It's the hour 6:30 PM. I will call the meeting to order. First order of business this evening will be to go into non-public for approximately a half hour. And I would entertain a motion now to go into non-public and to RSA 91A 32L and B.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Sorry, jumped right over you. Selectwoman Gilman.
Aye.
Selectman Chartran.
Aye.
Selectwoman Vice Chair Cowan. Clark says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye, motion passed. It's 5-0. The board will be moving into non-public. Thank you.
Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report. With recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning into Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels. Available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8. With all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report. With recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.
Good evening and welcome back to the Town of Exeter Select Board Meeting of August 11th, 2025. As the hour is 7 o'clock, I am calling the regular business meeting to order. The Board was down in the Wheelwright Room, meeting in non-public from 6:30 to 7:00. So now we'll start our regular business meeting, and I would like to begin by introducing the Board to my right, Selectman Dan Chartran. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Our Vice Chair, Selectwoman Molly Cowan, good evening.
Hi, everyone.
My left, our Clerk, Selectwoman Nancy Valanger.
Good evening, everyone.
Selectwoman Julie Gilman, good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
And next to Selectman Chartran, we have our Assistant Town Manager Melissa Roy. Good evening.
Good evening.
Our Recording Secretary is back here, Joanna Bartel. Hi, Joanna. And my name is Nico Papakosandis. First item of business this morning, this evening is public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to come forward with any comments to the Board. We do ask if your comments are relative to the agenda, that you wait till the Agenda Item comes up, and I will pause for public comment.
My name is Keith Whitehouse. I'm at 61 West Side Drive. I was just here to inquire about the All Veterans Credit that we have for property taxes here in Exeter. And I noticed that many of the surrounding towns have implemented that for all veterans. I was wondering what to do to make that happen.
To make what happen?
Can I take that one?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to...
Yeah, I want to try to understand what needs to be done. If you look at this, may I approach the bench like that?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, so we have a committee that's looking at all of the credits, the veterans, senior, etc. Selectwoman Gilman is the Select Board Rep to that committee. So I'm going to let her try to answer your question based on the work the committee's done thus far.
Thank you.
Yes, the committee is going through elderly exemptions and then the veterans' credits and exemptions. They did, and they're just advisory to the Select Board, so there's nothing binding here.
Okay.
The committee did vote not to go forward with the All Veterans Tax Credit.
And what was their reasoning?
Because we are changing, or they're recommending that we change the Veterans with Disabilities exemption from what it currently is to 2,500, leaving the All Veterans Credit that every vet can get to 500.
That's my question. So we now, as somebody, any veteran can get a $500 credit? Is that...
No, no. It's they haven't, you had to have served in a military combat.
Okay. So what in front of you, I'm just curious as to why all of our neighboring towns have changed that, but we have not. I just wanted to get the mindset of why, why that hasn't happened.
I don't know when our next meeting is. I'll bring your concern up to them.
And I just want to... Thank you, I appreciate that.
We do have this document that shows it. And again, I'm not a voting member of that group, but there was discussion about it's going to come up. And if the committee makes that recommendation and this Board adopts their recommendation, then your option is a citizen's petition.
But doesn't that cost money?
No.
You can do that for free.
It's need 25 registered voters to sign.
So they're still working, it's an advisory committee that was newly formed within the last year. They're still working on their review and recommendation. They will be coming before the Select Board, presumably sometime before the end of the year, I would think.
I'm talking to them about the budget, so yes.
So would you ask them?
So they'll have to come before the Board.
Yeah.
It will be a discussion item, open to the public. They'll make, like any other advisory committee, they'll make their recommendations to the Board. The public will be able to ask questions, make comments, and ultimately, it's going to be this Select Board that will either take the recommendation or not take the recommendation. If the Board does take the recommendation, and you as a citizen want to do a citizen's petition that would go on the next warrant, again, you just need to get 25 signatures.
So if they come to you and say, hey, we do or don't recommend this, can you pass it, or does that have to go on a warrant article, too?
No, it's just a recommendation to us.
Just a recommendation.
So say they do recommend it, can you guys say yea or nay? Does it have to go on a warrant article?
The town would vote.
The warrant, it would have to be a warrant article.
It would still, either way, it would have to be.
So what I'm asking here, and I was hoping to leave this with you, okay, tonight, was to get it on the warrant article. Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
So just a quick comment, any kind of, and please, don't, keep, stay standing. Any kind of credit or tax...
Exemption.
Yeah, anything that we give to a group of taxpayers, that gets, the obligation for that, or the responsibility for that gets spread out to all the other taxpayers. It's not like the money, oh, well, we're just not going to raise that money. We have to raise a certain amount of money. So we want to be conservative about these things, I think, naturally, because we want everyone to contribute to the well-being of the town. But, but there are reasons to do this. And I always like to remind folks, though, that it's not a free lunch.
I totally understand that. That's, and I don't think it's a huge group of people. What's happening is, it's, I don't know, maybe you just don't want to feel less than.
I understand.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will have it on the next agenda also, to reconsider.
Any other public comment?
Andrew Elliott, Washington Street. Hey, everybody. I just wanted to, I caught the recording of last Select Board meeting, and they went over the police and fire substation. And as one of the people who is really interested in the net zero aspect of the police and fire substation, I just wanted to offer my thanks to the police and fire for making sure that that gets prioritized and is getting done correctly. And also, I think it was Mr. Chartran was saying that if we don't put the solar on-site, it may not be net zero on day one, but being net zero-ready, I think, is appropriate. And I guess the other piece is, I mean, if the town's generating a crap-ton of power at the solar arrays that we have, is that considered on-premise? Because it's still in the town, right? So, I don't know, just something to think about. But did want to thank the police and fire and the architects to make sure that that came to fruition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a great point by you that we did not take up, so thank you for reminding us. The solar array out at the, yeah, the transfer station effectively makes the town practically net zero, so thank you for reminding us of that.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to review of our regular meeting minutes from July 28th, 2025. Are there any revisions or amendments to the minutes?
Look at me. No, I don't have any.
I look both ways.
Yeah, I know.
All right, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board Regular Meeting Minutes of July 28th, 2025.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion's unanimous. And we have two resignations to take up this evening, the first of which is Kathy Corson resigning from the 250 Celebration Commission. I would entertain a motion to accept the resignation.
So moved, and thank you for your work.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 5-0, and we thank Kathy for the great work she did on the 250 Celebration Commission. And the other one is Dawn Jelley from the Pear Point Park Stakeholders Advisory Committee. Dawn is resigning because she's moving out of Exeter, and she did an incredible amount of work while she was on the committee, so I extend sincere thanks to her. Would entertain a motion to accept her resignation?
So moved, second.
It's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion's unanimous. We'll jump into our discussion items. If the Board will indulge me, I'd like to, oh, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, the Pear Point Park Stakeholders also asked to elevate a member to a full Board member.
We did that at our last meeting. May I see?
Sorry. Go ahead.
If the Board will indulge me, I'd like to have B and C go first, as we have folks here from the public. So with that, I would ask Mr. Winham, did you want to introduce the 79E extension request?
And before that goes, I recused on the planning board, so I'm going to recuse from this discussion as well.
Understood.
Mario, you want to come up here? Thank you, Lord. So this is a 79E in your packet. You have a memo from me plus the covenant that, for public benefit, that Mario and the town signed and filed with the county. I'll let Mario, I guess, do the talking, but basically, you know, we all know what's going on with construction, how tough it's been. We know it from projects that have been downtown as recently as this past year. They've gone way over budget and way over their timeline. This one doesn't propose to go too much over at least the time. I know it's going to go over the budget a bit. But what Mario's asking for is an extension from the end of this month to the end of the year to finish his project, which obviously is going extremely well. It's a significant investment, and it's going to create new housing in our town, which is obviously very good. Did you want to address some of the asbestos, or?
Well, the issues are that they unearthed that awning that was on the front of the building. No one ever expected there to be asbestos behind that, but there was a lot of asbestos. They had to have, you know, they'd have to call the company to come and test it. Nobody comes right away anymore. Everybody's three or four weeks out. Sometimes they don't show up, that kind of thing. They found it to be a hot, and then it had to be removed. And nobody can do any other work until that stuff is all taken away. So that delayed the project quite a bit. And then when you delay, the other subcontractors move on to another job, and then you have to reschedule. If any of you have done any kind of construction work on an old building, you know what it's, it's worse now than it's ever been. But this is what we're up against. You know, they had problems in the basement with water coming in, so they had to wait for the mason to come and seal the walls. He didn't come right away. He came like three or four weeks later. But everything stopped until the walls are sealed. You can't do any of the interior work. So I mean, I want it done sooner than later. It's costing me a ton of money in interest, and no money's coming in hardly. So it's just, they work every day. It's not like two or three days go by that nobody's on the project. There are people there every day doing something. But it's, you know, it's a significant project, it's a big thing, and they're finding a lot of surprises that you just find in an old building. If anybody's ever renovated an old building, you know what I'm talking about. So other than that, we built a new house. It was supposed to be done in a year. It took two years to build our house, you know? It cost us a ton of money in storage and everything else, but so new construction isn't like it used to be either.
I understand.
I have a question.
Please.
And just to be clear, I would be in favor of doing this. You're doing a beautiful job renovating that building and adding more living space within it, which is great for the downtown. It's really in line with why we adopted 79E. But my question is, the voters have revoked 79E at the last town meeting. Is there any problem with extending this, given that we approved it previously?
We approved it previously.
So it's okay to extend it? So I'm in favor of extending this.
Any other questions or comments for either the applicant or Mr. Winham? No? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to extend the 79E initiative for Tax MAP 72, Lot 29, until December 31st, 2025.
I would make that motion.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Great job, Mario. Great job, Mario.
Have a good evening.
Good night.
Melissa, do we have someone here to speak to the street name recommendation?
That's just me.
It's not just you.
Just me.
So we do.
So unfortunately, Jason and Doug were not able to join us. But essentially, we have, we are, they are recommending, and they voted to recommend to name a newly-created private right-of-way providing access to a two-lot subdivision off Patricia Avenue as Dragonfly Lane, and to number the proposed dwellings accordingly in compliance with Chapter 14 of the Town Ordinance as depicted in the map in the packet. This is not renaming people on a new street. It's a brand-new right-of-way, so it doesn't affect anybody. They've done all of the notifications and everything necessary. They followed their normal process, and they're recommending that we vote on this tonight.
Okay. And the name does meet the Town criteria, the Town Ordinance criteria?
What a great name.
I know. I said that, too, actually.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this? Okay, seeing none. Any questions or comments from the board?
Good name.
Good name. It is a good name.
And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to name the newly-created private right-of-way providing access to a two-lot subdivision off of Patricia Avenue as Dragonfly Lane, and to number the proposed dwellings accordingly in compliance with Chapter 14 of the Town Ordinance as depicted on the attached map dated June 11, 2024.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roy. Selectwoman Gilman, you're up for the 250 Celebration Commission update.
Wait, I'm scrolling. Well, I think my memo and the minutes that were included cover substantially what we've been doing. The group has gotten together, and it's full of energy, lots of ideas. We're trying to stop people from starting new ideas, Karen, because we have, it's time for budgeting, and I'm giving them, you know, a time limit that I need the real dollars. So the budget and the handouts show you some of the events that we're planning, and we've decided to limit it to the two weeks with 4th of July in the middle. So it would start June 27 and end at July 11. So we'd start, we're hoping to start with a band concert. We have not talked to the band yet, the town band, yet about either adding a concert to their schedule or moving their schedule forward. We're, there may be other opportunities for things throughout the year, but we're not, we're not close to budgeting those kind of things. And maybe it's just an organizational, let's join you kind of thing in bringing what was happening then to compare with what's happening now, like on Memorial Day or Labor Day, something like that. And that's really the commission's, what the commission is trying to do is setting up events that are something family-friendly, something everyone can enjoy, but also look at it in perspective to, this is what we can do now because of what happened in 1776. I provided some, we're passing out flyers now for people to save the date. So, you know, don't go away for the 4th of July weekend. Stay in Exeter. We have things to do. And at the same time, ask for volunteers to help us because the five or six people that are there aren't going to be able to be all of these things. So, and that's where, on the budget, I'll scroll to it. You'll see that we're proposing to hire a, what's, where is it on here?
Volunteer coordinator.
Volunteer coordinator, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Prior, who is chair of the committee, to do that kind of thing, to make sure that it's advertised, it's organized as far as, you know, do we need supplies? Where are we going to get them? One of the things we talked about is, yes, we have a logo, but we're not interested in controlling stock. We don't want to get 300 XXL t-shirts and have them at the end of the year to either give away or sell. So we're going to set up something with our logo. There's a company that will, will take that, and you can order online the ones that fit you and the color you may want, or whatever we specify as, you know, maybe only red, in red, white, or blue. And that, that's what we're doing with some of the other things. I know that there is some question about if we're budgeting, budgeting things from our town departments, and that is not our intent. It is a separate budget, so that our town departments will do their annual budget the same way they always have. But they're choosing to have a thematic orientation to their, to their programs. So the summer program will do something about the 4th of July, or the flag, or, you know, things like that. The library's already got plans for their reading groups and recommended reading. So there, those are things that are, that they do, and they're just coordinating with us. They're not voting members on the committee. They're just coordinating with us as far as, this is what we're doing in the summer, and where do we fit into that? Maybe we volunteer at things ourselves. Maybe we provide something, cornbread to the Chili and Beer Festival, or something like that. So there's a lot of, I think we're winnowing down the events that we want to have. One of the things that I brought up to them, and it's been my, my thing for the whole time that we've been talking about having this commission, was fireworks at the end of the year, which we don't do, but to see the 250th end, and then we go forward with our next piece of democracy. But, you know, it's part of budget, so that can, I will strongly advocate for. But you have a choice. So I guess where I, where we are is seeking donations, we're nailing down where we need to get or pay for different items for people. And what we're talking about at our next meeting next week, more to refine the budget more.
Hmm.
So I guess if I've said to.
Would you like to come up and, as chair? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thanks for having me. So my name is Karen Pryor, and I have become the chair of the 250th Commission. As Julie said, I mean, as you all know, the charge of this commission is really to celebrate the year-long 250th. The dates that Julie gave you of June 27 through July 11 is the focus of the Commission of activities and events that we will champion and shepherd through. But our goal really is to be the hub of the wheel, if you will, with all the spokes coming off. We want to engage the schools. We want to engage all organizations that want to be involved. But until we have our calendar of events really kind of nailed down what we're going to do, it's hard to then, you know, really promote what we're doing out to outside organizations. So we're sort of still in that organizational process. And then, so we have some great things going on. We're partnering, obviously, with the American Independence Museum, of which I'm a member of the board. We're partnering with the Phillips Exeter Academy. We're partnering with the library, deeply partnered with Parks and Recreation. We couldn't do this work without them. Huge shout out to them and to their staff. So it's wonderful. And so really, we're just that hub of that wheel and hope to be kind of the repository. We're working with Bob Lawacki, who is, you know, promoting all things with our calendar out. We're working with the Chamber of Commerce. Our idea is not to create necessarily new events for the rest of the year, but to piggyback on what already exists. So if you think of the Chili Festival, how do we brand that with the 250th? You think of the Holiday Parade, maybe we brand that. We think of even the Festival of Trees, maybe that gets branded with the 250th. We're just in conversation with everybody on how we might want to do that. I hope that makes sense.
It does.
And so specifically, we've met with the new executive director of the American Independence Museum, and you'll see one line item in the budget, which I would like to pitch. I'm kind of wearing two hats here, both as the chair of the commission, but also as a member of the board, is the American Independence Museum, as you know, hosts the festival every July 11. And this, and coming up in 2026, they, we, really plan on stepping it up tremendously. And we're actually going to be partnering, Joe Pace, the executive director, has joined our commission as an ex-officio member. And some of the ideas that he's, you know, coming up with are unbelievable. You all may remember, for those of you that have been in Exeter for a long time, when Swayze Park was an encampment. We want to do that again. We're looking at bringing the Gundalo Company in. We're looking at doing a parade on July 11. So it's really kind of lifting Exeter up in a way that it hasn't been in a long time. We have the broadside, I mean, right? And how do we celebrate, you know, that Exeter was the Revolutionary War center? It was the capital of this state. So it's not just a one-shot hit where we want to do this in 2026. We really want to elevate this town, not just statewide, but actually, you know, nationally, of who we are. We were the state capital of this country, and we have a lot of stories to tell. And they're very broad stories. And so, you know, part of the reason I'm here today is because you'll see in the budget, a request for support of the American Independence Museum to help elevate this event that we're going to be doing in 2026. And we're not asking for it in perpetuity. We're asking it for a one-time sponsorship or underwriting so that we're able to, so that the American Independence Museum is able to do what it does best, which is celebrate, you know, our independence in this country. So unless you have any other questions, I hope I've given you a reasonable summary.
No, this is very exciting. A lot of work has been done for a relatively short period of time you've been a committee. Thank you for chairing.
My pleasure.
And it's very exciting. I will, I will say, though, I think that I have to think through, to be fully transparent, I'm also a board of governor of the American Independence Museum, and I really have to think through whether I need to recuse myself on this part of the budget.
Understood.
And, you know, I'm leaning towards the fact that I would, that there is a conflict of interest there. So I just want to be fully transparent with my board members that I probably would recuse myself from voting on the budget piece of this.
And Julie, you're on our Board of Governors as well.
Yes, I am a non-voting member of the 250 Commission, so I didn't already vote for this. But I have the same concerns, that I don't want to be seeing, you know, taking money and giving it to myself, basically.
Unless they picked off one more of us, we'd still have a quorum.
I mean, I guess, one, just, I guess, maybe my closing statement is, is I certainly understand budget constraints, and I, as a taxpayer, I respect them. I also think, though, that this opportunity is an opportunity to elevate Exeter, not just for this one event, but particularly given where the organization is going, it's an opportunity to elevate Exeter long-term from an economic impact. And so I hope you will consider that in your decision-making.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. Any other questions?
Anybody else?
No, just thanks so much for your work, Karen.
Thank you, Marley.
I think Ms. Roy had a question.
I just had a, sorry, I just had a quick question, or two quick questions. So I, I noticed that you guys are asking for $15,000 for the parade. Is that correct?
Yes.
So my only concern, and just something to discuss, is that we only, I think, support the Holiday Parade for about $5,000. So just so everybody has those two numbers. I don't know.
Those are the numbers that I'm looking for across the board.
Yep.
For all these events, that we're looking for more money, that Parks and Rec already does. I don't have those numbers.
Can I answer that one? Yeah, that's, yeah, I don't know. This may be a one-time thing. I'm not sure. That's why I just wanted to ask.
This is the estimate that Parks and Rec gave us for an extra holiday, not for one that we already produce or already pay for.
So Beth does the Holiday Parade. Park and Rec has nothing to do with the Holiday Parade. They're two different things.
Right. Right. But we donate money to the Holiday Parade. It's in our holiday expenses or whatever.
We do about $5,000, I think.
Right.
So that was, yeah, I was wondering.
And, and they get donations. So it's not that a parade costs $5,000. It's that we're donating $5,000. In this case, we are accepting donations, but we have to put out there how much money we need to appropriate. And that was the number that we were given.
I'd like to add, while the budget that we've presented to you is, you know, pretty flat budget, we are seeking donations and sponsorships. We've already received $2,500 from the Rotary Foundation. We're working on a grant right now with Bangor Savings Bank for $25,000. So anything we get is going to help go against that budget request.
Perfect.
Okay, I have, should I? Is it all right?
Of course.
I just wanted to cut you off.
That's why we're here.
So if we come up with a flat budget number, and you raise enough funds, does that mean you're, the money won't be spent that the town, let me just, that we allocate, or will you use those additional funds that you're raising to do even more? What's your goal?
I would say it's not to do more, and I'm not a budget finance person, so I don't know how it works, but I see it going against the $55,000. It's not in addition to. It's going, it will underwrite what we've already requested.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That wasn't clear. Could I do one more follow-up?
Please.
So the $10,000 to the American Museum.
No, five.
Festival. Is it five? Excuse me. And that's a one-time off. You said something that I'd forgotten about. Could you elaborate a little bit more? There were, there used to be like a three-day festival, and it has been cut back.
Yes.
I missed it this year, so I don't know what was downtown this year. So there's some things that I think you want to bring back, and what you're looking for would help fund that?
Absolutely. So, well, yes, we're going to bring an encampment to Swayze Parkway. We want to bring the Gundalo in at night when there's the fireworks. One of the things, Joe Pace being Joe Pace, he wants to get the cannons going on Swayze Parkway. I mean, he wants to make this a really big event. And frankly, I wouldn't be on the board if I didn't believe this, but if anyone can do it, Joe Pace can.
Well, thanks for bringing that up, because I hadn't even considered the event and how it used to be growing up and for years.
Yeah.
And, and remember when we were growing up, and it was a two- to three-day event?
It was.
It wasn't Exeter's event. It was the Chamber of Commerce's event, working with the Independence Festival.
And I haven't seen the Independence Festival all that time.
And other people, like the chicken, fried chicken barbecue was hair and the.
Okay, thank you.
Volunteer firefighters, so.
Everyone's getting a history lesson.
There's, yeah. Well, you know, it's out there, and bless Harry. I miss him.
I know.
I want him for our chicken cookout. But it's, there's always been a collaboration between the town and other bodies, businesses, and, and so we're trying to carry that same kind of thing forward.
Well, and since I'm on public TV for a moment, I mean, that's really the goal of this commission, is to be collaborative. It is not just about this commission. It is to bring as many organizations and bodies into it that want to be into it. We're really kind of the catalyst to make it happen, but we welcome all. And, you know, that's really, we hope to put that brand out there, and everyone will brand what they're doing, merchants in town and so forth. So thank you.
You did a great job of explaining that very thing, and that's a great part of what you're doing as a commission, not trying to do the whole thing, but just trying to, trying to be the playmaker.
Exactly right. We want to, we particularly want to get the schools involved, too, and the youth.
That's awesome.
So, yeah. So thank you very much for your time.
Karen, before you go, can I ask you one more follow-up? I'm sorry.
I just don't want to take up too much of your time.
No, no, that's what this is for. I just, the question is on the interns. So our budget doesn't pass till March. There's going to be a lot of people vying for interns and things like that, because this isn't just Exeter's state, right? So do you have any plans on trying to secure an intern or interns?
To be honest, not yet. One of our channels is certainly through UNH, and it, through event planning and volunteer management, or, I can't think of the other organization, but yeah.
Yeah, just to get someone on board and.
And it's a, it really is a great resume builder for the right person to be able to coordinate all these volunteers that we're going to need, because all of the organizations, I mean, it's going to be, you know, a really, a moving target in terms of, you know, what we're doing during those two weeks, plus what everybody else is doing. And so to try to coordinate volunteers for this full year is going to be not an insignificant lift.
Well, a good plus is to remind them that we're the capital, right?
That's right.
I had questions. Sorry, guys.
That's why we're here. That's why we're here.
Let's see. Oh, just to reach out to the band, the brass band, about changing their schedule. Someone's going to do that sooner than later, too, in case they are, like, someone's hooking them for the other time.
Yeah, we've got that. We're also already working with getting people to lead with the parade in terms of having color guards and, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts, but, and we're really, we're really organized now, I think. Don't you think so, Julie? And we have some new members coming on board, which I'm really excited about, who will be presented to you for approval in the coming weeks.
Okay.
Excellent.
I think I've asked enough questions.
No, that's, they're here, so.
No, I know. I'm just saying, I think I've really covered it. I was a little skeptical on the Independence Day, because I felt it was more collaborative, but I understand what they want to bring back now. And I think that's kind of an important aspect of that. So I'm comfortable with that now.
Thank you.
So that was worth, that was worth the trip down.
Thank you.
But I do have one thing I want to say. I gave a resident, your name, Selectwoman Gilman, last week. He was mentioning something about possibly fundraising through commemorative license plates.
Oh, interesting.
That I think the state is, so I gave him your name, and he said he'd be reaching out to you, but that's an opportunity as well, and that'd be fun.
And we've also contacted, been working with Bob Hall for the Down Easter.
Oh, good.
To do some collaboration that way, and how to promote what we're doing, and how to bring people here, so.
It's going to be exciting.
Yeah, it is. I think so.
And some of our lifetimes that are left, this is going to be the last hurrah or something like this, that, in town, you know? Yes, I love the idea of the continuing, I'll speak for myself, but.
God, this is.
I'm 63, so the next time we have a big celebration, and, you know, it's, I think it's a big deal.
You'll get the Boston Post fan.
It's been found. You said it was lost. I read it, it was found. Anyway, I appreciate the work. I love the idea about not just doing it for next year, but keeping the history going and alive for something like this.
The mission of the American Independence Museum is, has not changed, but what we're really working to do is to raise democracy as an ongoing experiment. Which has, I think, in the past, and the museum is a very special and unique place. I've lived here for 30 years, but it has not been, for me personally, overly inspiring. I think the energy and the mission is shifting so that it's going to be an engaging place of how we, as a nation, have conversations about this, about our independence, and that this is a working experiment. And I think it's going to be vibrant, and I think it's going to be amazing for this community.
Thank you. So just to elaborate, when I was a kid, we did the 1776, and that's what I'm comparing it to. That was quite a few years ago. So that's where I was going with that.
We'll be playing 776 and having a sing-along.
Great. So to be able to, it's an honor to be able to live in my hometown, where I'm going to be able to experience what we are going.
I hope I live up to your expectations.
This is all just a warm-up for 12 years from now when we do our 400.
Yeah, but then I'll be in my 70s, so I'll see you.
Oh, you'll be chairing that.
My gas is running out, chair.
Selectwoman Shertrane, this is where you use the phrase, the younger generation.
The younger generation.
We're making room for the younger.
You guys have younger kids, they can take over.
It'll be 12 years from now.
Anyway, thank you very much. I take your time.
Anyway, Karen, thank you very much. Thank you so much. Because you really did help me to parse through some things.
You're welcome to stay for, we've got more business to conduct, but thank you.
Can I put that on the agenda?
Why not?
So Andrew Elliott, again, just as a member of the Budget Recommendation Committee, I'm seeing some things here. I just had some questions about, like, fireworks. We already have a budget for that, so is this 10,000 above and beyond the existing fireworks budget?
Yes.
So 10,000 more, bigger booms?
More booms.
More booms.
A different time of year.
Different day.
Well, it's so close to the day that we already do it, I don't know. So we're going to do two fireworks?
The one's at the end of the year. One is the annual that we do after the American Independence Festival, which is budgeted in Parks and Rec's budget.
Which is right in July.
Right. And this proposal's for the end of the year.
This is for.
It's a different, different part of the year.
November, December.
Oh, I guess I missed that.
But the BRC will get a swing at this, right?
They will.
He's warming up.
Well, that's all right. And I guess the other, the other thing, too, is just the intern. I thought we talked that there wouldn't be any new hires this year.
Well, that's a, it's more of a grant than it is a hiring. It's like they're not going to have benefits or anything with that.
I mean, it's $20,000, right? So it's no small.
I think it was like 10.
Or 10, sorry.
It's 10. So, and it's, this is kind of a special occasion.
Short period of time.
Having an intern for.
Sort of like this commission, we end.
They're going to finalize their budget. It's going to go before the BRC. It's going to do some phenomenal work, and then it'll come back to the board.
From there.
Ultimately, the voters will decide.
And this would be an independent line item on the budget, like the 5,000 was this year? It wouldn't be in the existing budget?
Say that again, please.
Are we contemplating this as a warrant article? Or are we contemplating this, putting it into the budget?
Right.
No, it has to be a warrant article.
Okay, all right. Then my final comment, then I'll get out of here, I swear to God, is just if we do raise these funds, and I'd like you to consider writing the warrant article in a way that any matching funds, or we get money from, you know, sponsors, that the, that the funds go in a different account for future projects like this, so we don't have to ask for funds again.
We set up that fund last year, on our last warrant article.
This fund, we established the voters voted to establish it.
That was, okay.
And it's just for the year.
And that was the 5,000 that we put in there from last year. Okay, yeah, so, so hopefully, we get tons of funds, and then that money just grows with interest, and in 50 years, we have a big old party, but.
Well, no, I think we dedicated that fund to just 2026, so.
Well, that's, that's the thing. If we get a bunch of funds and we don't spend it, I would rather not have all this money just go back into our general fund.
That's a discussion for a later date.
I think the warrant article to, to be written in a way that it goes, it stays.
We have an incredibly talented executive team, who I promise you will craft the warrant article, not only in a very legal binding way, but one that will be easy to, for folks to understand and accomplish what we want to accomplish.
Yeah, okay.
If I may, so Andrew, I believe, and I will have to go back and double-check, but I believe that this fund was created only for this event, and it was going to sunset after a year or two. So we wouldn't be able to leave money into it for future celebrations. This would be shut down. If we were to fundraise more money, we wouldn't take any tax dollars, and I think we would set a maximum amount of money to be fundraised up to. We wouldn't take extra money to just put in the general fund. We will confirm all of this.
Yeah.
But that was my understanding last year when we created the fund. So unlike, for example, the Park Improvement Fund, which is a capital reserve fund, every year, it, we didn't, we didn't designate an end date for that. It was whenever there was funding available. This, if I remember correctly, did have an end date, so we wouldn't be able to use it for future celebrations.
Yeah, that's my understanding, too. All of what you said is my understanding.
What a great preview, BRC.
I also, if I.
I feel warmed up.
Selectwoman Cowan, please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's okay. I mean, first of all, I want to thank everybody for the work. I want to, you know, it's good to also have your perspective, BRC member. I also think one of the things that we have to think about is the economic impact on our town. I have heard from so many merchants downtown and so many restaurant owners about the decrease in sales. And one of the things that I really worry about is if we make a little bit of an investment in promoting our town, how does that yield economic boom for everybody in our town as well, which drives up revenue? And so that's one of those things that I don't want us to be nickel-and-diming ourselves out of really investing in our, in our business base and in our taxpayers, because I think that that is a real opportunity to highlight Exeter, highlight the good work that, you know, celebrate democracy, which I sincerely hope we still are, and, and really think about what the economic impact of this kind of investment would be.
One of the things that isn't on this list, but I had talked to one of the businesses downtown, or he talked to me, about having an end-of-season kind of sidewalk sale, but only in the town hall, have all the stores bring out when they're changing their stock over. And doing something like that with a theme for the 250 is that, what were they making back then, and what are we making now? What do we buy now? You know, women didn't wear pants, but we have a business down here that sells jeans. So, you know, what, what happened in between? When did that become a thing? And so we may be calling on you, I might write scripts to, to lead off some of these events like that. Just, it's, you know, kind of simple things that we want to include the businesses and not be an imposition on them.
I don't, I think something fun, like even a fashion show at the town hall. You could get, you don't have to go that far back, but just do the ages or something, might be a, a fun thing that people might enjoy. But anyway, my brain can just go on with ideas on that stuff. Oh, before we vote, the buttons, the 250.
I don't, I don't.
We are, okay. The 250, the buttons, are they going to be sold?
We hadn't quite decided on that, because the library's actually going to be doing that as a teen activity.
As a teen activity?
Teen.
Teen, thank you.
One of their summer activities.
Okay, no, I'm fine. I just was curious.
So, as Julie mentioned, we're not going to just print stuff, you know, it's going to be a print on it, but we are working with a low, two things. I'm already collaborating, to be honest with you, with Exeter Fine Arts for a really cool event that we're going to do with them. And it'll be happening at the Folsom Tavern, and, which will be then spearheaded, hopefully, by, I don't know if you've heard of her, but she's an artist here in town, Sarah Koff.
Yes.
If you remember the beautiful commemorative poster from the Tricentennial, I think it was. We're going to be doing that. And there's going to be a limited edition that are going to be signed and sold, and then there'll be a poster that, so there's ways that we're going to be making some revenue, but in a really classy way.
Yeah, no, you know, I think of questions that people at home listening would have, just to see where the money's going and whatever.
There's a lot, there's a lot of collaborative opportu, and I really, if anyone knows me, you know that my middle name really should be Collaboration, because that's really all I care about, is it's, you know, being, it's how many people we can engage, you know, how can we be a catalyst to bring this community together? Excuse me. And, and talking about the economic impact, Molly, you know, I'm sure because of your statewide work, you're familiar with the New Hampshire Center for CDFA, Community Development Finance Authority. And what they do is, and that's their mission, is, and I've worked with them a lot in my nonprofit work, it's that creating that triangle of community investment, nonprofit investment, you know, and the state. And this is, it's, you said, Julie, that, Molly, this is really an opportunity for us to elevate Exeter. Now, this is not just about a one-time deal. This is about how we put the, you know, who we are and what we do here on the map, so that we're a destination. I mean, I walk around town and I look at the amazing restaurants we have now. These aren't just, you know, mom-and-pop pizza shops. These are beautiful restaurants. How do we continue to draw on that, to expand this downtown? For anybody I know that ever comes here loves it. So that, that really is what I, you know, I, I hope this is just a catalyst for moving that forward.
And you just explain to people why nonprofits are very important.
Nonprofits are really important.
Just a total aside, we wanted to collaborate with the state and federal government on what the, their celebrations are, and get a thematic thing from them for any event. And they both offer a website where we can put our stuff.
I was going to say, they're probably going to steal from you.
Yeah, they are. I think we get a logo, but that's, that's really kind of the extent of the collaboration with the state.
Yeah, I mean, the logo we've got, we'd like to hand it out to every merchant downtown and stick it in your window that we are participating in. So, you know, we're only beginning. I mean, this is August. We have a long way to go, but there's going to be.
Our merchants tend to get into the.
I think it's going to be a lot of fun. I mean, I plan on seeing a lot in that Water Street bookstore window. No, we want to have book talks. I mean, we, you know, there's a book that we want to bring in and bring the author in and collaborate with Water Street Bookstore. There's really important work that's happening right now, and, and this is our moment. I mean, given what's going on, this is our moment. It doesn't matter what side of the aisle you're on, it's about having the conversation.
Oh, it's not that at all, yes. I'm excited. Thank you.
We're in, Karen. We're in.
We're in it?
We're in. He's saying bookstore.
I had you at hello.
I think she already was coming.
Yeah, and thank you again, on the, on the festival and what they want to add to it. That made a big difference for me.
I think I'm at home now before.
Thank you.
Karen, thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you, Selectwoman Gilman.
Yes.
And good questions. All right, moving into regular business, we have a jeopardy tax to take up.
Yeah, sorry. Bear with me, I lost my spot here. Oh, here it is. Okay, ready for that? For jeopardy tax, I move map 104, lot 79, unit 417, in the amount of $886 for the tax year 2025.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. We do not have any permits and approvals this evening, so I will turn it over to Ms. Roy for the Town Manager's Report, please.
Good evening, everybody. Let me just pull this up. All right, so this Thursday night, the CAIP will go to the Planning Board. We've been working on that since our town planner is out right now. We do have a temporary, which I'll talk about in a minute, but Kathy Grotto, I want to extend a huge thanks in the Planning Department. She worked really hard to get that done with Cory and myself and all the department heads, so we look forward to that on Thursday night. Like I just said, we have a new temporary town planner. Her name is Carol Ogovie.
have a new temporary Town Planner. Her name is Carol Ogilvy. She is with us on Mondays and Thursdays, so she can attend Planning Board. There may be some adjustments to that because she does help with a few other communities, but if you need to call Building and Planning, they have her schedule. So she's been a fantastic help. We're very glad to have her on. Unfortunately, Clarissa Coppin, who is our Welfare Administrator, has given her notice. Her family is moving way up north, about two hours away. And unfortunately, she did not want to leave, but she can't make a two-hour drive each way. So her last day will be Monday, August 18th. We've already posted the position. We've already gotten applications, some of which look promising, so that's exciting. In the meantime, Pam McElroy, who used to hold the position, is going to give us a hand until we get our new person on, our new person on board. We have another resignation, Nancy Bugbee from Parks and Rec, who's been with us for about 19 years, has given her notice and she is going to be leaving in about a month or so. Right now, she's going to be working part-time remotely to help us transition while Park and Rec gets into their new building. So we thank Nancy for staying on to give us some help. She has a beautiful grandson who she would like to spend a little bit more time with, so she's going to be doing that and we thank her for staying on. We are doing really well, knock on wood, in DPW. We're down to eight vacancies, which is the lowest we've had in a while. We have four non-union and four union. And the exciting part about that is the union positions, we had many, many, many more. And at this point now, after the town supported last year's contract negotiations, we've been able to fill quite a few of our positions. So I'd like to give kudos to the DPW Department who is always looking for more people. We are still needing a Town Engineer, which right now we have our former Town Engineer on a contract with us to help in the interim, Assistant Engineer, Engineering Tech. And we have one position in Highway, one position in Maintenance, and two positions in Water Sewer. At one point, I think we had like eight positions just in Water Sewer alone. So, so great job to the team down there. You got an email today from Cory. We received a issuer rating, which is a general rating to the financial health of the town. And we received a double A+. Would like to give a lot of credit to Ross Dean and Cory, who have been steering our financial ship for quite a long time. Cory is going to come in on the 18th and explain a little bit more, but that was exciting news for us. Downstairs, the front glass door will be removed, not the one to the outside, the vestibule, because it's not ADA compliant until we come up with a better solution. But for those folks trying to get in on canes, wheelchairs, any of that stuff, there's not another push button. So the quick answer is to remove the inside door. And I'll let you know when we have a better plan for that, but that's what we're going to do right now. Parks and Recreation, the project at Ten Hampton Road is going fantastic, but we do need just an extra 30 days. So we did apply to the state for another third, not for another, for a 30-day extension. So we will be finishing that project up by the end of September. There were just two or three things that we thought we still might finish on time, but didn't want to take the chance and miss it since it was state funding. So we have until September 30th. Again, we're still aiming for the end of August, but just in case. Director Cronin wanted me to be able to tell everybody that paving for Epping Road Phase 1 widening project will begin tomorrow, August 12th. Work is expected to last through this week. DPW recommends that commuters seek alternative routes while this work is being completed. And then also from DPW, the gas main installation on High Street from Drinkwater Road to Langdon Ave starts this week and is expected to last two to three weeks.
Thank you. I was going to ask about that.
Very busy last week.
Every morning, I see the sign. I'm thinking, what is that? Okay.
So that's it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Roy?
No, DPW is taking all of my little side exits out of town. Drinkwater Road, anyway. Yeah, no, thank you. And the Housing Advisory Committee, you did attend that too?
I did, yes. I, well, I didn't even talk about all of the meetings I attended because I feel like my day's 99% meetings. So lots of meetings with different departments. Like you said, Housing Advisory, dealing with a few different personnel issues because I still wear the HR hat, and doing all kinds of things, so.
Yes.
Yes.
Our Assistant Town Manager has been wearing many, many hats.
Happy to do it.
Thank you so much.
And we do.
Happy to do it.
Anything else? Moving on to Select Board Committee Reports, Selectwoman Gilman, please.
Yes. You heard the 250th report. And other than that, I didn't have anything since then, since the last meeting, and I don't have anything coming up until after the next meeting. The Heritage Commission, 250, and the HDC.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so I had a Housing Advisory Committee meeting last Friday on the 8th. Legislative update and ways we could pull together our housing data were discussed and it's being looked into. Upcoming, I have a Planning Board site walk for 97 Portsmouth Ave. That's this Wednesday, open to the public, 8:00 AM. It starts at 8:00 AM. And then, it's not on my committee calendar, but in my calendar, I have this information meeting for School Street project that I'm hoping to attend at, and it's at the Exeter Library at 6:00 PM Wednesday night. And then, please want to pay attention to our budget process. The fund starts with Planning Board. The CIP is Thursday night at 7:00. I do want to give a heads up to the board, though. Something's come up at my office where I'm going to have a hard time doing Housing Advisory Committees, at least through December for a change in the schedule. So if anyone could think over the next week before our next meeting, I'm happy to take a night meeting from someone, even if it's just for a few months, but I can't close my office.
Right.
So when do you meet?
Pardon me?
When do you meet?
It's the second Friday of the month, from 8:30 to 10:00 here in the Novak Room. We don't record it because it doesn't have a budget. So if that's an alternative that we could consider to record, and then I could watch it and still do my report, but I wouldn't be able to participate. So that's not great.
On a Friday, if...
Yeah, no, I'm just asking for people to think about it. And maybe we could bring it back up, if that's okay, at our next meeting.
Yeah.
It would just be till the end of the year.
I have another thing that's the second Friday of every month, but it may be changed after this Friday.
Okay, great. So if we could, thank you.
Plus, I have a lot to talk about.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just can't. It's out of my hands, so.
Understood.
Thank you.
Understood. We all work.
It's not one I want to give up. I started it.
No, I know. Very passionate, and you've done a lot of great work. So I'm hoping you can go back on it.
I know I can go back after the first of the year. It's just scheduling.
Yeah, I understand. I understand. Thank you. Selectwoman Cowan.
I have nothing to report.
Okay, thank you. Selectwoman Chartran.
Sustainability Advisory was postponed because of a lack of a quorum last Wednesday, so I have no report on that. I do have a Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. I did not have any committee meetings. However, with Selectwoman Belanger, we attended the ribbon cutting at the new Planet Playground, so it was nice to cut the ribbon. It was nice to have representatives from Senator Shaheen's office, Senator Hassan's office, and Congressman Papas's office. All sent staff to read letters. It was well-attended and Parks and Rec did a nice job organizing it. And it was great to have the kids at the playground as the backdrop.
Oh, that was one of the best parts of it.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
Equally as awesome, National Night Out. Thank you again to the Exeter Police Department and in particular Detective Page. That really is his Super Bowl. I mean, he...
Not for tonight.
He just does an amazing job. And I got there a little late, but I did sacrifice myself for an hour at the dunk tank and...
I did not. I walked through, was amazed at the amount of people that attended, but I did not go in the dunk tank.
Thanks for taking my time, Mr. Chair.
It's a pleasure.
My back won't allow me to do that anymore.
And by the time I got there, the water was running low, so your back would...
And anybody that saw the video. Our chair spouse video, his daughter dunking her father. It was funny.
And also attended a couple of the many meetings that Assistant Town Manager Roy was in. She was able to invite me to some of those, so working with her and Mr. Stevens. So productive, productive couple of weeks. And again, kudos to you and Cory for doing, you know, such a great job.
Thank you for all your support. And Cory?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to give a couple of updates on the Governor's actions on some of our bills. Two bills that we were interested in or very interested in, she vetoed very nicely. We can pass out our budget explanation, our warrant article explanation, fact sheets, without fear of going to jail or...
Misdomina charges.
Misdomina charges for each warrant article for each of us. So she vetoed that, which is great. And the other was the double down default budget, where we, any position that was open for two years would no longer be in, counted in the default budget. So it would make our budget basically a race to the bottom, you know, it would get less and less, so that eventually that's all people would vote for because it would be always smaller than the proposed.
DPW and their lack of being able to fill spots appreciates that being vetoed.
And there were two housing bills that were approved. And one is the accessory dwelling unit by right in residential zones.
Which we have, yeah.
Yeah, which Exeter already has by special exception. And the other was allowing residential properties, residential units above retail properties, commercial properties, so mixed use basically. And we already have that downtown.
Yeah, Exeter seems to be ahead of them.
Well, no, it covers the, Exeter is, you know, I have trouble sometimes saying, we can already do that, we can already do that. And then I'm thinking of, you know, Epsom or, you know, Conway, you know, need to pick up their pace. But it also includes industrial zones and it includes existing buildings. So for example, the strip mall in Portsmouth Ave, they could build a second floor, a third floor on top of that building as long as it's structurally sound, but...
They can now?
They can now, yes.
But it's good for the state.
It is, it is good for the state.
Allow for more housing and maybe some of these communities that are pushing back. The builders can put in their applications. I don't know. I don't know the answer. Just keep trying.
We have one representative that wants to stop giving people carrots and just give them, and just use a stick.
Maybe more than one.
Yeah.
Thanks. Appreciate that. We had a few pieces of correspondence. One was the letter that I said at the last meeting that I would write in response to the...
Yeah, that was very well written, as usual. Thank you.
Handwritten, thank you. We had an email from Bob Hall on the Exeter Train Station, and I am working with him and DPW and anticipate that this will be on an upcoming agenda discussion item, if not the 18th and certainly September 2nd.
I need to get over there and see. I meant to go over there.
I've talked with Public Works.
I haven't seen pictures. I don't, yeah.
There's more. Public Works is going to come here to explain...
Oh, good. Okay, thank you.
Exactly what was missing there. We have an email from a resident about Exeter housing stock. And in response to the email, I actually met with him for an hour and a half last Monday. We had a nice chat. And we have our bulletin from the NHMA correspondence. Reviewing the board calendar, we'll be here next Monday night, the 18th, September 2nd, which is a Tuesday, September 15th, and September 29th. I'm going to work with the executive team. I started looking into October and we have another couple of holidays, so I want to kind of move backwards from December, but we'll get more dates as we get forward. And we have one last order of business, which is going into non-public. And I didn't know, I don't, once we go into non-public, we go downstairs. I didn't know if you were here for anything we can help you with or if you just...
I'm just here because I was interested. I'm interested in getting into politics myself, and I figured it's a good spot to start.
Well, thank you. I hope we see you at more meetings and like to see you get involved. Fantastic. Thank you.
Anytime you want to chat.
Yeah. Our email addresses are on our website. If you ever want to sit down with any of us, we'd love to do that. So thank you. If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to go into non-public under RSA 91A 32D.
So moved.
Second.
It's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please.
Selectwoman Chartran?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. The board will be moving into non-public. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 6 and 22. Channel 6 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 8 with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.